Chairman Brown will not be present today, so you're stuck with me. All right, for a pleasant meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First, item on the agenda, approved minutes of May first. I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item will be the pay the bills. So the motion is approve all claims as presented. I will second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, all. All right, next one. Yeah, the custodian Keith and KJG Engineering.
Yes, Jeremy Duff with KJG Engineering. So you know, we've been working on structural assessment and building envelope for courthouse. Kind of the last major piece of that. We've been waiting for some better weather and a firmer yard, but we're scheduled for this Wednesday to come and do the entire exterior facade inspection, so we're gonna have boom lift around there. We're gonna fly wood ready just in case everything. We intentionally scheduled for Wednesday, thinking that would be least disruptive with the courthouse being closed in the afternoon. We got Thursday's kind of our backup if we don't get as far as we want to on Wednesday. So that'll be looking at loose limestone, taking a little bit closer look at the balconies and the roof while we're at it. And then, so far, the good news is we found nothing structural of concern. Maybe the bad news is, and this will be in our report, some of the cracks we're seeing, especially in that kind of back access there, don't appear to be moisture. There are some places where we're getting some water in through the west balconies and the roof, but there appear to be some other areas where we think it is humidity during the summer, getting soaked into the plaster, and then the winter drying out. So, the good news is it's not a structural problem. Bad news is that'll repeat itself every year, and it's a big-ticket item to do anything major with. So, again, kind of want to assure you on the structural, at least on the interior, and then we'll know more about the exterior after this week. So, if there's any concerns, I guess, about us on Wednesday, just let us know. We can move around and you'll have to go in a perfect pattern. So if there's something where we're bothering people outside the windows...
If I think you want to report to you, then you have to take care of it.
Yeah, I'll check with the courts today and make sure that's the one area we'll be especially sensitive with. So, we can say later Wednesday night that there's one area that just we can't get to during the normal day, so go with that. And hopefully here in a few weeks have a report to you, and we can go through that at a special meeting, or we'll also have time to digest that.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Anything else, Keith?
Nope.
You're good.
Good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes.
Where is it?
That's the head of...
Jamie Smith here from Carroll Manor, who's busy. She's got two applicants. I sign them Saturday, Friday?
Friday.
Friday. I don't know. One was supposed to have been done, and I didn't make it. It's what I planned Friday to do, but she had two, so I went ahead and did them both. So I got a motion to accept both. I'm going to read your names.
Carol Hannah Tyra and Arlene Marie Strang.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you need these back?
Well, eventually, we need those first back.
Jan first. I didn't know if you needed...
I'll be back up here again today, so...
All right. I didn't know if you needed to get out there or not, so I wanted to catch you. Yes.
Are those full pay, partial pay, what?
Um, one's a...
Both negotiated.
Huh?
Both negotiated.
Negotiated. I'm surprised the house said you full, because we're KJ. All right, you got anything else, Jan?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, Scotty's up here at the highway. You're up, Scott?
Okay.
Everybody's gonna give it to me that quick.
Yeah, me neither. Okay. One thing we'd like to do is for the community crossings is open them for bidders, the notice bidders. I have a copy of, for each of you, the letter, or the notice. I think there's also... Oh, also in here is the yearly operations report, the list of bidders in the state. It's on there too.
Have you submitted that?
Yes.
I think the only thing you need to tell us is where you want to go with it.
Um, okay, I got that too.
Yeah.
All right. Like I said, this is for the community crossings here. After going through the bids that we received for the materials, asphalt materials, for asphalt mixes, which is your... Your regular asphalt, like wedging or something like that, is Rees Riley. They were, they were the cheapest, winter, summer coal mix. That falls in that too, because we accept all bids, we usually use simple pavement. The zones are in the building, it's warm. The others are outside, so... I just wrote down what we was going with. I got, I got...
Well, you can do the recommendations, and I think we definitely do this, take the recommendations that he wants, approve them, then sign them the next meeting?
Do you need it signed before then, Scott?
I don't think so.
Sure?
Yeah. I mean, not that I know of. This is my personal process, so...
Well, do you have any, you don't have to do any, you need to buy any of these materials coming down in the June meeting? Under this contract?
It would, if we did, it'd just be probably coal mix.
Well, if you need something before the next meeting, then they should approve your bid and authorize either one or all your commissioners to sign the bid, you know, at a time that's convenient for them to come in and sign it. So, if that's what you need, then that's what the motion should be.
I don't think we ever did sign the bids. I think he signed, I think Paulian has to sign them or can.
Actually, they're supposed to be signed by the county commissioner.
Right.
That's the way, I'm just saying, I just like, what I meant was a bid sheet that they brought it to them and then they approved it. Because I won't, I won't have that on file unless I get a copy of what you got there.
I can tell you this here.
The bid form usually has county commissioners right on it. Doesn't it?
I think so.
Yeah.
I don't, do you have a proposal? Let's fill it to contract.
Yes, it's a contract.
Yeah. So we're learning all kinds of new things up here.
Yeah. My suggestion, we make the motion to approve the...
What did he say?
Rees Riley, is that him?
No, he's got several.
Yeah, I've got two here.
Okay.
Assistant option.
This is the first one.
Okay. You don't have a list of them, or?
I got a list of ones I was gonna have, or my recommendations.
Okay, well, you got five in there, or like six?
Yeah. There's four.
Okay. I think you just read them off one after another, the name, what it's for, and the amount.
Okay.
And then they can vote on each one of them, or vote all of them at the end of your recitation.
Okay. All right, I don't have the amounts with me, but I can, I can get them.
So I have to board?
I'm gonna bring the actual bids, and that's enough for y'all.
That's all right. I think what you can do is this way, you read them out and do what you want, then we can decide if you can sign it.
Okay. So, the first one's asphalt, makes simple Rees Riley. The next one is equipment rental, with simple paving, because it was cheapest. Most, all these are the cheapest bids. The oil, like the, for chip and seal stuff, I can't pronounce it. It is asphalt materials. And, calcium chloride, simple paving was gonna load it down. I'll get prices, and then, can Steve know you a copy of this? I'll put prices out there.
The housing, is that applied?
Yeah. They, they apply that.
I don't know, yeah, they actually put it in the price.
I think, I think they just had the calcium chloride, so try not, try not to apply.
You gotta apply it, don't you?
No. Yeah, because you can't have oil in the distributor when you put it down, so ours has got your chip and seal.
Okay.
Yeah, so they have to have a clean one, so they usually do it for us. They do, they can do it a lot quicker, too. They're, they're more experienced in it. I think that's part of counties.
Right. So that's your full recommendations?
Yep.
Want to make a summary? So we have a motion to approve Scott's recommendations for the highway, chip and seal and paving program, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's it.
We need to also approve the advertising note, business note, too.
You need to tell them what it's about, so the public can know, and so she can fit it in the paper.
All right. And the notice, the bidders for the community crossings is for them to come in and pave. We have, we have to contract that out, so that's for contractors come in to bid on paving our community crossings project.
So we just need the motion to advertise?
Yes.
And what they, and what their bids do.
See, that, about here. Okay. This is, we're gonna advertise May twenty fourth, thirty first. And then, so thirty first is just till noon, they're closing.
This is when this publishing...
Yeah. All workers to be done by seven o'clock.
There you go, quit taking bids, Scott.
Yeah, I know.
It's at the top, it's the June fourteenth at fourteen.
Oh, yeah, yep. Yeah, sixteen.
Yeah, I see that as spaced there, sorry.
I mean, sixteen at fourteen, whatever it is.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for advertising and paving for community corrections, all in favor?
Proper.
Community corrections.
You're never gonna pave over the inmates. I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
So you get your motion?
I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody's got anything for Scott while he's here, if we can, more money? Mike's got something.
Those, we had a discussion about using some of the old cameras to put in over there.
Right.
I just wanted to know if you, if the commissioners wanted to do that, and I'll get with Scott. And...
I think we need them over there. It's the cameras from here, the, because we got that new system, to switch them over to the highway.
How many cameras?
We were looking at eight. The cost would be about seventeen hundred dollars. I didn't know if he was gonna take it out of his budget, or what you were looking at doing.
What cameras?
I think it'd be necessary. Much issue with them having over there. And I recommended two mics, man, over, so if they get somebody in there, it's unreally make stress reported. One in, one in the office somewhere, and one out the shop later. We even... Make the motion to have them installed?
Oh, yeah, I was bummed you called.
You got it.
Was it? I think I can remember that.
I'll have to get back with the vendor on the mics, though.
Right.
But it'd bump the price up a little bit. It was sixteen ninety-five.
Yeah. I think we'll be okay, because it's quite though a good system, way, still decent to use in other areas.
And there is, there is three cameras on the outside, I think. Can they be used with that, or?
I'll get with Chris, and we'll see. I was under the impression that there wasn't any cameras over there at all.
Just, there's just like at the gates, and the front door, or the, it's always there.
And they, they still work?
Yeah, but nobody knows how to access them.
So probably something like all head into hole?
I think so.
So you go, Mike, I motion it this morning?
Yeah.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
And while you're here, I had a call from the sheriff, the Lancaster Bridge was damaged. I made a decision to blow the road off because of the four point one traffic. They busted the top, didn't they?
On both ends, or something tall, it's in there.
Yeah.
I don't know about the structure, I, I've got, I got a whole, or emailed the bridge inspector this morning, go ahead and take a look at it, but I think he's doing it ours now.
Then I had a, there's a horse farm or something down there, or cam or something. He called me, and wants to know if we can still have access, just for, there are ATVs and horses, if we can do maybe a five-foot opening and close the rest of it off. I told him, I told him we could until we had the bridge inspected, make sure it's safe.
Right, yes.
But he was requesting that we have it at least accessible for people across after the inspection.
Yeah, he wanted to make sure it's safe first.
Right. And I don't know if you can just put partial barricades up and just leave an opening?
The only, the only problem is, in the past, we had to move the barricade, we go across anyway, so we had to put stone in front of them to keep them from crossing, so, as long as, I don't have a problem with it, as long as we don't have people doing that.
And we got a way to, like, they kind of attach it half, you know, like block half of it off, and just leave it path?
We can, we can try to figure out something to do for that.
What do you think about that?
Just for the end out?
Oh, yeah, above.
Holding strength of the trusses. All the strength of the structure probably in the trusses.
Yeah.
They aren't damaged at all.
Yeah, no, it was just the siding that hangs down.
Just on it.
Yeah.
They had to know they did it.
I know. So I'm gonna, like I said, I was gonna have it inspected, just to make sure that nothing weight-wise underneath was done.
Probably same.
All right.
Should probably be the record of ratifying the closure of the bridge, and authorizing the highway supervisors to work with the inspector, or whether or not anything could be used to accommodate the...
And does that bridge is gonna be up, how long?
Well, I think that project's only six months.
Six months.
They're replacing the bridge, I guess, on four point one.
Is that the big iron bridge?
It's the one, I think it's the one goes over Wildcat.
Okay.
Because they're gonna do seventy-five, too.
Yeah, it kind of just parted off. Both at the same time.
Yeah, they go chip and seal eighteen, so that's gonna be closed for...
Next week.
Next week.
You got all this down?
Yep. And they got... And then there's someone two eighteen also, so...
Right, two eighteen, the town cam is gonna be shut down on one line, they're repaving the holes.
Okay.
Five hundred, five hundred south, is it? Lancaster Bridge?
Uh, west, five hundred west. Between five and six hundred south. And then twenty-nine, just south or north of eighteen, they're doing some of that box code, they're redoing something there. I don't know, I haven't heard anything about resurface, but...
So Ted, should we work at road closure due to four point one road closure? Or closure?
You're just closing, aren't you?
Yeah.
I would say...
After the damage?
Yep, approval for the closure of Lancaster Bridge, and allow the highway supervisor to work with the bridge inspector, but whether any kind of combination can be for horse track.
Then you'll, then you'll let us know after the inspectors done, and get that set up?
Yep. Yep, I'll, I'll let you guys know. Close the bridge now, allow you to work with it. Inspector, I'm gonna take a look at the pictures.
I'll second that motion.
So you're closing the bridge, like a ten, thirteen road, for now, for now?
Yeah, well, we, we got a, it's, you can't turn around if you were, if I remember right.
Not really. I, I got, on the E ten, I got where people live there can get in and out, so we have staggered, but at the bridge, it's totally closed off, it wasn't.
So the gravel's not a bad, it's gravel road anyway.
Yeah, no, it's, it's chip and seal.
Okay. Do we need to close the whole road?
Well, I, I closed the bridge. Yeah. I mean, there's no reason, reason for anybody to go down there, other than that they live there.
Right.
Yeah, they'll be going down there and trying to turn around, and...
So, yeah, we'll do the whole road.
Ends of the road's off anymore.
Because we got road closed, the intersections also, so, because it's just stagnant, so people live there, can get in and out, turn.
All right, well, I'll second, more than potion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Just let us know, and if you can figure something out for the worst traffic or whatever.
I'll be with, if he tells me he's gonna go to inspect, I'll make it right, too.
Okay.
I'll text or something.
All right. Thanks, Scott.
All right, thank you.
All right, move forward. Curbside. Ed and Gaiman. Good morning.
Morning. This is actually Sean Kane, and we had a...
Oh, we had a change.
So, yeah, I'm Executive Director of the County Complaint Commission, and we're here to see if the county would like to participate in a grant we're submitting to the Department of Tr, US Department of Transportation to do safety plans for all the county, eight counties in our region, if anyone chooses to participate. US DOT had opened this grant up last year to do safety, because safety concerns on local roads and highways throughout the country. They have, you, there's two sections of the program. One is to do plans for everybody, and then, once you have a plan, you can submit for implementation projects. So this would be the first step to make eligible for future grants. The state also has a program for safety projects.
So when you do that in county, and tell us where some intersections are the worst?
Right, they'll look at your data, from crash data that you have, they'll talk to local officials, so, and then they'll come up with proposed projects that could be implemented to increase safety on local roads. And those can range from complete road reconstruction if needed, or it could be as simple as paint lines in these areas, because you have a lot of layoffs in these areas, and...
Are you gonna help us get the grant petition?
Well, that's it. This plan is, once you have this plan, you're eligible to apply for grants to actually implement what's in the plan. I did give you a page, it is an eighty percent grant, so there's a twenty percent match, so we're asking our counties to provide the match. The numbers that you see here were based on one, we had some discussions with a couple of consultants, because we hire consultants to do the actual plan. This was the high estimate that we got, so we're going in with that one. The other estimate was about half this, so the bid, once the grant's awarded, we'll go through a procurement process to select a consultant. We'll ask each of the counties to put somebody on that selection team, so you'll have somebody who could be worked on this selection team.
Wouldn't you have to know this answer, because I just love a highway guy.
The grant is due...
Oh, is it? Oh, I didn't see it.
The grant is due July tenth, so we'd like by the end of June to know whether you want to participate or not. Like I said, these numbers, this would be the absolute most. I, there's a good chance it would be considerably lower than this.
Because it'll probably have to come out of your budget, Scott.
And the timeline is, the grant goes in July tenth, they said they'll make awards fourth quarter of twenty-three, but then it says it can take up to twelve months to get the grant agreements all signed, so it's possibly looking at twenty-five before the union is closed. Maybe the end of twenty-four, that's early, probably still twelve months still in the federal. And then normally, Carroll County doesn't participate in our transportation program because you're part of the WCA, so I did talk with Tim down there, and he said they weren't planning to do this, gave the blessing for us to submit for you, if you're interested. And then on Thursday, Mayor Worthing actually emailed us, asking if we would submit one for the city, not knowing that we were planning to do it for the whole region, so she's definitely interested in it.
Without a war, that's awesome, too.
Uh, if you want to ask the city for that, where do you come up with the money?
I didn't know, since it was a whole county, you just did the county reserve, you did all the...
It'll be all the local, yeah, it will include the municipal, so...
What do you think, Scott? This is kind of your area, you want some time to talk to them, and...
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to investigate, I'll just get some, make sure I know what it's all about before I agree to something.
We have commitments from...
Yeah, White County approved it this morning, Emily was actually at White County, which we, Stark County, Stark and White were actually going to do this on their own before we said we did get a grant, they didn't, we said... Stark County, Stark and White were actually going to do this on their own before we said we didn't get a grant paid in percent of it, so they're both interested. Plaski County has said they're interested. And I talked to commissioners in Vic and Newton, and they're, I'm going to Newton Commissioners this afternoon, but they both said they'd probably be interested. I talked to the highway guy in Jasper County, and he said, yeah, we'd probably be interested. I talked to a county council person in Warren County, and he said, yeah, but, so...
I think we'd be interested, we're missing our third wheel today.
Alright, I understand, that's why we went to get there before, like, as long as we know by the end of June.
Yeah, we need again... The third? Is that right? July the third? Oh, I was looking at the wrong one, I skipped one, holy cow. Um, Scott, could you know more by the next meeting?
Yeah.
And I think Bill will be here too.
Yeah.
You wanna talk?
About it. So we're kinda like table listening to that?
At that point in time, we wouldn't need just the letter.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll get you, we want the draft letter that we would need to submit the application up.
Ted, Ted can do it, or you guys submitted Ted, he'll approve one? Alright, well, thank you.
Yep.
Sounds interesting.
Then us, um, yeah, there's facts, um, in our eight counties, from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, there are a hundred and sixty-nine eight highway fatalities, in our region down there. So about thirty-four, thirty-five, pretty good, yeah, so...
So we're looking to cut...
Is it the infrastructure's fault, or the individual drivers?
Yeah, that's, hopefully not the study, we'll look at some of that. And some of the, the recommendations, in my opinion, it's like public service announcements, if you see a lot of distracted drivers, we might need some programs or training, going to the school, do more education. It can be all sorts of recommendations, they'll come up.
Same, we got our E M A, they're back here too.
Then I also handed to the limitation, we're having our fiftieth anniversary celebration, uh, next Thursday, the twenty-fifth, from one to six in Monon, if they give back.
Those are represented.
Yes, but anybody's invited, you know, I'll take care of them.
Just while we're here to let you know what we're doing in the county right now, um... On Friday, we're submitting a grant for Flora to do a conference plan. Delphi's just completing a conference plan that we gotta get the grant for. In June, Camden's gonna be submitting a application for a water construction grant, about seven hundred thousand dollars. Keep them busy on the town.
I will appreciate it, Scott.
Yeah, we can be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
So how much was that twenty percent match, the max?
Uh, twenty-three seventy-five.
Thank you.
I said that'll be the absolute maximum.
Yeah, I got that, thank you.
That's your tow, but he's not here, it's a little early.
Yeah, that's probably...
I'll text. They'll take it on? Oh. Well, Doug? You got anything for him?
He did have an appointment, so he decided he might be late to...
You wanna do the seal stuff?
Yeah, we can do that. We'll do that, so...
He has an appointment, he said he'd be running more.
Do you remember what I did? I never got a response from him, so he's probably...
That's what it's about.
Alright Ted, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
The first one is a, uh...
The what?
Request for disbursement funds, um, the, uh, construction funds for... BW Construction, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
These are payments they talked about last meeting?
Yeah, so, uh... This is an authorization for, of your disbursement request. It goes to the trustee bank, which is the one that actually pays the money out. So it doesn't come out of the county funds, it doesn't involve council approval, it just requires you to approve the requisition and, and, and then they'll pay it, to make the payment out of the bond process.
What do you think, Mr. Warren? Also, a motion to approve the request for two hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
It is requisition number two.
Requisition number two, I hear that. And I will second that, all in favor? Motion passes.
Probably two copies.
We can just tell this guy to go to Bill.
Second thing is on the easement. Saturday, I received from, uh, the owners, attorney, uh, word that the election before Saturday. The owners have agreed to the amount that the, that the board has approved in principle, uh, for payment of, for the easement, uh, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand ninety-four dollars for the total easement for the jail. And, uh, they have reviewed the form of the easement and have requested changes that I would call, that relate to agricultural use of the, the meaning of the easement. They have conceded that the manhole should not, cannot be, uh, lowered. Uh, and that's not because of, you know, it, it costs money to do it, or anything like that. Um, the engineers say that, uh, none of this is public, firm and side recipient, that we would not be compliant with the state, uh, health department on sanitary sewers. They, they have to be accessible, and they have to be every four hundred feet. And otherwise, you put in a straight pipe with no access, you can't, can't do that at the jail. So they, they have conceded that point, so they're not requesting them to make it to be lowered. But they want some language in there to protect the, the continued agricultural use of the property. And so I'm not asking you to approve the, the form of the, uh, of the easement today. I told them that we wanted, I, I sent it on to, uh, both, both firm and side for the engineers. But I heard back from them, from an engineering standpoint, they don't have any problem with the changes that were requested. I am waiting for a comment from BW, 'cause they would be the ones that have to deal with contractors. And, and some of these things have to do with removing the top soil, pushing it to the side, digging, and then putting the top soil back, so they can farm it and so forth. And, uh, you know, having markers or coloration or whatever, so that they can be seen, the manholes can be seen more easily, so they won't damage the manhole or farm equipment and so forth. So I think they're reasonable, but, uh, I've also referred to bond counsel, to Warren Farmer, for them to look at. I've already received a comment from Dustin, uh, by text this morning. This will, this easement will need to be changed so it goes to the building corporation, uh, because eventually it's gonna come back to the county. County will eventually be responsible for, for, for this. So, uh, but initially, it needs to be, uh, the, the grant of easement needs to go to the building corporation. So, uh, I, I, I don't know if you have had a chance to look at this long enough, just send your comments to me, and I can, uh, include them, or if, uh, one of the commissioners wants to be involved with any, uh, conversation on, uh, on the phone, a team meeting, or anything like that, uh, we, that can be arranged. I don't know if any, if either of you want to be involved with that part of that bill. You know, I, I, I would ask Bill if he were here, but, uh, so. There's not any kind of a meeting set on this, we're just exchanging comments right now. So, uh, my recommendation is, if we're used to, uh, I've got a couple, two or three motions here, uh... Is to approve the amount of twenty-nine thousand ninety-four dollars for the easement itself. Now, this money's not gonna come out of the county, it's gonna come out of bond, it's not gonna come out of the county jail, or anything like that. So the first motion would be, uh, to approve the amount of twenty-nine thousand ninety-four dollars for the easement. The second motion, if you want that, would be, uh, because we want to try to get this wrapped up, uh... June, June is, is it June the first, December next, maybe?
Yeah.
The fifth? Uh, I don't know if there's any rush to get this written, uh, uh, finished, but, and, and we may have to have a corporation, the building corporation, we can see, and so... I think there's probably less need to rush it, but if you wanted to authorize one of the members of the board and me to work with, um, with BW and the engineer and, uh, the landowners to, uh, work out this language, that you could do that, that'd be another motion if you want to do it. I, I don't see probably the need to do that today, if you don't want to do that. We'll probably bring it up next year on the fifth, I think. We'll find out differently then, we may, we could use something else.
You might have to be interested during the day, to work with the major data and public.
Yep. The third thing will be to request the building corporation to approve the payment for the easement and any related expenses from the construction fund. So that would, so I will say two motions, approve the amount of twenty-nine oh ninety-four for the easement, and second one, to request the building corporation to approve payment, uh, for the easement and related expenses from the construction fund. There may be, uh, uh, title insurance, uh, involved, or title search involved, and there may be other things related to the easement. And I have had a chance to talk to Dustin about that, I'm gonna call him back at the range for the, to get the details on it. He responded to me, uh, this morning while the meeting's been going on, yes, the building corporation can do it, it can be paid for the construction. So two motions, one to approve the amount of twenty-nine oh ninety-four for the easement, and the second one's to request the building corporation to approve the payment for the easement and related expenses from the construction fund. My, my suggestion.
Opt of the amount of twenty-nine thousand ninety-four dollars. Is that your motion? I'll second that motion, all in favor? Alright, aye, motion passes.
And also, uh... The request to the building corporation to approve the...
I'll second that, all in favor?
That's all I've got.
Alright.
I read this brief from this morning, but...
Okay, that'll, so we have...
Sure.
Alright, Mr. Tobias, you're up, sir. Uh, we just did the two, uh... Uh, one, the other, just to, to approve the money, the payment, and to approve the amount, or if I say that backwards.
Right, right. So I don't think you're probably gonna need that.
Warren, sorry, gentlemen. Um, here on behalf of Sheriff Flay, obviously, uh, he is actually in Washington DC this week in attendance. This is the first year that Beverlyville Rain has been, uh, has been displayed on the national precincts, it's been rolling along. And so he's, uh, interested in the sheriff's office, and, you know, there's been a couple of, uh, deputies, so... Sheriff had asked me to pre- uh, present to the board this morning, and, uh, regarding to the, uh, federal grant that is available to us.